All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. We will now call this meeting to order, and we will begin with the roll call. I'm Dedrick Johnson, Mayor, present.
April Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Chris Sharp, District 3.
Jeremy Clark, District 4.
All right, let the record reflect that a quorum has been established, although one may not be needed for this, being that there is no actions being taken, it is a workshop. But we do have four of the seven commission members present, and so we will now open up for public comments. And at this time, I do not have anyone who has requested to address the commission or even enter in any public comments. I see no one with staff here. Thank you all for being here. So we will move on to item three on the agenda, which is the discussion of the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. We will hear from our Finance Director, Ms. Cynthia Rushing.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff. Okay. All right, so of course, this is my first time presenting this budget before you today, but I am pleased to be here, standing before you, to present the proposed FY25 budget Okay, so before I go into the agenda, I do want to say that normally, the budget workshop has been two sessions, and today, we're doing one for FY25, and it's a combined session into one, due to the timing, the timing of my arrival as the Finance Director. So there's a lot of material here that we're going to cover, that I kind of summarize. But if there's any additional information you may need, I am happy to schedule a meeting with you to provide any answers that you may have that, for whatever reason, we don't get to in this one-hour session, okay? So for the agenda, I'm going to go through what our budget process is. I'm going to talk about the General Fund, Enterprise Fund, and the other funds, and then we'll open it up for questions. So the budget process is pretty consistent from year to year. It starts off with the budget development, and this is where staff will determine what their budget needs are, that are aligned with their departmental goals. There's internal review with the Mayor and the executive leadership team. And the second phase is the budget review and the tax rate calculation, where we submit information to Galveston County Tax Office for the truth in taxation. The Chief Appraiser with Galveston County will certify the roll, and then we have the workshops, and that's what we're doing today. And then the final phase is the adoption phase, and that is when we get our notification of our tax rate, the no new revenue rate, our voter approval rate. We have public hearings, and then we adopt both the tax rate, as well as the FY or the fiscal budget, the FY25 budget. So here is just the timeline. This is our calendar, Phase 1, which has been completed from May to July 8th. We've been working, the staff has been working on their budgets, having budget workshops, and just making sure that we're able to get all of that information in, and come up with a budget that is going to keep our service levels at the same as we've been providing before, and anywhere we can improve, we're definitely doing that. And then Phase 2, and Phase 2 is combined, Phase 2 and Phase 3 is combined, which is budget review and adoption process. So we've submitted our TNT information, which is very critical, to Galveston County, and then today, we're doing our budget workshop. Some dates, I won't go through all of these dates, but I want to highlight some of the very important dates. On August 7th, this is where we'll have the proposed tax rate, and that will be at our next commission meeting, and we will have a recorded vote for the no new revenue and VAR. But that is dependent upon whether we receive that rate, those rates, from Galveston County. So it's a really tight line, but if we don't get it in time, then that will drive a special called meeting on August 14th. I'll fix it. Oh, thank you. On this particular slide, with the calendar continuing, the other important date is August 21st, where that's the next commission meeting, and that's where we will adopt the tax rate for the no new revenue. It'll probably be no new revenue versus the VAR, but that is the time that we'll do that, and we'll approve the certified tax roll. And then finally, on the 18th, on September 18th, that's when we'll have our public hearing on the proposed budget, and then we'll adopt the budget by record vote. Believe it or not, I came in here and I tested this, and I thought that... Thank you, Madam Secretary. So this is the General Fund. This is the proposed budget for the General Fund for FY25. The way that you would read this table here is that this is all of our departments, and this is their proposed O&amp;M, which is for operations and maintenance, and then new is their new request for one-time capital cost, and then the grand total. So as we look at our grand total for the General Fund, it's $76.9 million for FY25, with a new ask or new request of $4.5 million. So when we break this down, we look at and we say between labor and nonlabor. Labor, of course, is our staff, salaries and benefits. The budget is 62% of that number, so 62% of the $76.9 represents labor, which is $48 million. And then the $29 million is for the nonlabor, and that's pretty much our operations and maintenance. And then for the new ask or the new request for these one-time capital requests, 83% is a representative number of that $4.5 million. And then for new positions that the staff has requested, that represents 17%. So this slide here is just showing you the visual of the information that was presented on the previous slide. But I really want to highlight the fact that the budget compared to FY24 is flat. So when we look at the adopted budget for FY24, it was $76.3 million, and then for FY25, it's $76.9 million, with a $4.5 million ask for the capital replacement cost. So what's really important here is that the staff has been driving efficiencies in the operations to keep the budget flat. However, more staff is needed to, you know, stay current and keep up with the economic growth. And then, of course, we do have some aging operational equipment, heavy equipment and vehicles that we need to replace. One example is, we have a 2002 dump truck that's in fleet, and it needs to be replaced. So moving on to the next slide. This slide here is itemizing that $4.5 million by department and by labor and nonlabor, with some description of what's being asked. So if we look at the total, it's $4.5 million, we've talked about that. But then by department, we have police that's asking for two crime technicians, two crime scene technicians, and then to replace some capital equipment, primarily vehicles. So that's their ask, and so they're asking for a million dollars. When we go to Public Works, here, the 2002 dump truck is listed here. This is just the example of, you know, the old equipment that we have. And so I won't go through all of them. Of course, if you have any questions about them, then we can ask at that time, but just for the second time, I want to make sure I get through the presentation. But again, this is $4.5 million. This is one-time ask, with the exception of the staff. So the staff request for new positions will be built into a budget going forward, but for the one-time ask, this is, this won't be something that will be baked into the budget, the operating budget, year on year. So now, we're going to go to the Enterprise Fund. So the Enterprise Fund, you may be wondering, what is the Enterprise Fund? This is a self-supporting governmental fund, where we sell services, goods and services to the public for a fee. And so for Texas City, our enterprise is water and sewer. So this is, if we look at the proposed budget for FY25, the operational budget is $23.5 million, and we're projecting that the revenue will be $23.5. So I know that looks perfect, right? So it's perfect because it is, no. It looks perfect because, you know, we projected the revenue to equal the expenses, but as you can see, historically, in 2022, revenue came in at $21 million, and '23, it came in at $24 million. And then when we forecasted, or annualized the year-to-date revenue for FY24, it was around $24 million. So I was conservative, and I just went ahead and made sure that the revenue would match the expenses in this case. But should the expenses ever exceed the revenue, the good thing about it is, is that the utility department can actually draw down on their fund balance. And their fund balance as of June 30th of this year was, it is $55.4 million. So we have several other funds. I think it may be 30 other funds. But I wanted to highlight some of the ones that have the most activity, and that you would be interested in. And here, I just want to show that here are the funds that we have, that are special revenue funds, and who they're administered by, and then what the amount is in the account or the fund balance. So I'll give you a moment to look through this, and then we'll go into a little bit more detail on two of these funds, the Texas Dyke Fund and the Debt Service Fund. So our Texas Dyke Fund, the main source of revenue is the access fee, which we charge on weekends during the fishing season, from March 1st through October 31st. Currently, the dyke is closed due to severe damage from Hurricane Burl, and due to the catastrophe that we have, period, it was not periodically, it seems to be quite routine, like maybe whenever we have a storm, like maybe every two years. So starting in FY25, we're going to set aside 20% of the revenue and allocate that to a newly-created restoration fund for the dyke. The purpose of this fund will be to allow for immediate repairs after catastrophe, versus having to wait for reimbursable dollars or any other funds that are available to us through FEMA, the federal government. So when we look at the budget below, we're forecasting the revenue to be $1.4 million, but because we're in FY25, we're going to do a split. So 1.1 will go to the operation and maintenance for the dyke, and then the $300,000, the 20%, will go to that restoration fund. But as you can see, the O&amp;M cost, or budget for the dyke, is pretty much on par with the actuals from previous years. So in FY22, it was $687,000, compared to $672,000 in '23, and then this FY25 budget at $700,000. So it's on par.
Ms. Rushing, if you don't mind, I'm sorry to catch this earlier, but we're going to call that actually the Texas City Dyke Fund, but it just says Texas Dyke Fund, but it will be the Texas City Dyke Fund, Texas City Dyke Restoration Fund, and so on.
Mayor, at some point, we were giving some of that money to the county. We're not doing that anymore?
No. The county totally turned all dyke responsibilities over to us about four, how many years ago was that? Several years ago.
It's been a few years.
Yeah. So it's 100% on us now. And Ms. Rushing, do you want to stop for any questions, or you want to make it through the whole presentation before we add?
I can definitely pause for questions.
Commissioners, do y'all have any questions about anything discussed thus far? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rushing.
So moving on to the Debt Service Fund. So here you have a list of outstanding bonds that we have here at Texas City. The Debt Service Fund, the first three is being paid out of the General Fund from property taxes, and then the Utility Fund bond is paid from our utility fund, so this is paid through the enterprise. So as we look at principal interest and total payment for this year for FY25, we'll be paying out $2 million in debt payments coming from the General Fund or property taxes, and then the $700,000 will be coming from the Utility Fund. We've paid off, in February, we paid off one of the bonds, and the 2013 CO bond, and that was $6.2 million. So on the next slide, we'll show you the visual of what's happening with our Debt Service Fund. So we're planning to ask for new bond funds for FY25 to keep our debt rate flat at the 10 cents. You may be wondering, why would we want to keep our debt rate flat? It is important that during this time, as we have economic growth within, we have an aging infrastructure, that we would use capital to make these repairs and have the improvements at a time that we can stay consistent with our service level for our residents here in Texas City. So when we go to this next slide, here's the visual. So in 2024, we had $8.6 million in debt payments, and like I mentioned before, we paid off that one bond of 2013 CO bond, and that was $6 million. So now, our debt is declining, however, we still have a lot of capital improvements. So we're exploring the capital projects, and these projects are projects that we feel that we can complete within one to two years. So to give you an example, fire station expansion at Fire Station 1, a new fire station, drainage improvement projects, as well as traffic signal upgrades. So these are the things that we're exploring. We're planning to meet with a financial advisor, just to talk about what our options are in this space, to be able to fund some of these much-needed projects, like I said, to basically keep our service level up and for our residents, and just to keep up with the So that's heavy material right there, so I will pause. Any questions?
So the 2024 to 2025, the extreme drop-off is indicative of the $6 million in debt that we paid off last year?
Yes.
From the 2013 bond?
Yes, Mayor.
And you're saying that will probably intentionally create more debt to address some of the capital needs that we have as a result of the growth that we're experiencing?
Now, this is, as you know, we have several corporations, but I just want to highlight one of the most active ones, is our Economic Development Corp., our EDC. And this is a nonprofit corporation that was created to promote the development of new and expanding businesses, and we're doing a fabulous job here. And so this is their proposed budget for FY25. As you know, the EDC has its own board, they vote on their budget, but we want to just be as transparent as possible and share what's ahead for FY25 for EDC. And this is, their projected revenue is $7 million, $7.41 million, with expenses of 3.6, leaving 3.5 in the black for the TDC. So very healthy financial position for EDC. And I really appreciate you holding your questions, I guess, to this part. So I'm hoping you have some questions, and we can have some really robust dialogue on the information that was shared.
Thank you, Ms. Rushing. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions about anything that's been presented today, or even if not today, any budget-related, budget item-related questions?
No, sir.
I don't think I do.
We will, as she presented earlier in this presentation, there is a calendar of a timeline, where we'll be waiting on some information from the county relative to the no new revenue rate and the proposed tax rates that we'll be deciding on. Hopefully, they can get that out to us in time, so we don't have an after-call, a special call meeting before our next commission meeting. Not before our next one, but before the August 17th commission meeting. I think the citizens of Texas City are, I think we're really blessed here in Texas City to be able to experience the growth that we're experiencing, and to do so with addressing some of these capital needs and projects and infrastructural acquisitions that we will do without passing an increased tax rate to our citizens. Oftentimes, when you do the amount of work that we're doing in Texas City, that doesn't come without an increased tax rate. And I know citizens, year after year, will say, "My taxes have gone up." And oftentimes, it's because of their appraisal value, and the central appraisal district's assessments have gone up. But I'm happy to say that in the last few years, Texas City has either lowered or maintained our tax rate in the city, and so we plan on continuing to do that, should you all be okay with these numbers. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments relative to the budget presentation, the workshop, or anything moving forward? Yes, sir.
On the Dyke Fund, the reserve, they said that's 20%, are we going to create a fund balance there, or are we just saying 20% per year?
Right now, it's going to be 20%.
Every year.
And it's just be building, it will be building a fund balance, so, yeah, because it'll stay there. Yeah.
That's what I was wondering. I know we're responsible for keeping it paid.
Yeah, and so, as she mentioned, during Hurricane Ike, we all know, our dyke was totally decimated, and we waited on some federal funds and some things like that, and we rebuilt the dyke. I believe we received some substantial damage in Harvey, and then we received some damage here in Beryl. Lots and lots of erosion. Jack had a great interview with i45Now, and ABC 13 has covered some of it, and Joe, myself, Jack, and several others have been out there and assessing the damage and cleaning it up. And in order to get the dyke restored 100% completely to where it was once, you know, the best tourist attraction and fishing spot in the world, it's going to take upwards of, you know, $5 million or so. And sometimes, that disaster relief will come in the form of governmental assistance through FEMA or otherwise, but even if and when it does, that takes a very long time. And so if we can establish a fund balance of our own, in-house, based upon the revenue that we generate, that would expedite a lot, and those things would still probably be reimbursable through governmental assistance. It's just all about efficiency, and sometimes, just natural wear and tear from things that don't result from natural disasters. So thankful that we're going to be establishing this restoration fund.
Anyone else?
Oh. So Mr. Gomez? We had an opportunity at the beginning for the public to ask questions, and so normally, we wouldn't take questions, but we have a little bit of time today. I'm going to allow you an opportunity to ask your questions, even though the public comment section has already passed. Is that okay? If you don't mind removing your hat inside. Ms. Rushing, can you step up here and give Mr. Gomez the mic?
My turn. Yes. I just heard the beautiful lady indicate that the Economic Development Corporation is going to leave a $3 million debt, and you're going to pass it off to the 2025? Is that correct, sir?
Did you say, did you say $3 million debt?
Yes.
No, that's not what was stated, but she can clarify what you'd like. We have it on the screen in front of you.
So what this is showing is that revenue will be $7 million, and the expenses for EDC is around $3.6 million, leaving a balance in the positive of $3.5 million. So it's no debt that's being passed on.
That's my mistake. But Mayor, I want to congratulate you. In the number of years that I have come here, regardless if I've had a mistake, or not, or didn't listen well, this is one of the best presentations on the budget that I have ever heard here in Texas City.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Thank you, Ms. Rushing. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on anything?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. That roughly, that balance of $3.4 million will be added on to the existing, I believe it's $13 million fund balance. So it'll be closer to $17 million at the end of next year, when it's all said and done. So that is a healthy fund balance, and it's definitely not running in the red, it's running in the black by a large margin.
I believe sometimes, in the financial world, the parentheses means negative, which confuse some people.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that's what...
That's very...
Yeah, apologies for that, okay. All right, I was looking for...
Ms. Rushing, thank you again. Well, if there are no other questions, we have a motion to adjourn.
You're not done, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I wasn't going through the appendix. So that was just, that was just available for more detail for the Commissioners to review.
Okay, so we'll see you all at 5 o'clock at the City Commission Meeting. Thank y'all very much.
Good job, Miss Rushing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.